December 20, 2016. And we are in the Board of Commissioners' conference room. So we'll have our public comment. This is the time we have set aside for public comment on any topic other than quasi judicial land use matters. Laura said you're in her seat, by the way. Just turn that off. To join us for public comment. So come on up, Mr. Wall.
Okay, it's kind of a production number to get my tonnage out of this chair.
Do you want to stay there? Would you be more comfortable?
Well, we got the mic right here. Probably ought to be close to the mic if you can. If you can.
I have an artificial knee on one side and an artificial hip on the other.
So you're bionic?
Unfortunately.
Anyway, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David S. Wall, W-A-L-L. My address is seven five, Appeal Box 756, Newburg, Oregon, 97132. Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me for today's topic. There are two documents before you. One is in reference to appeals of a land use issue, which I will not get into the specific details because it would not be fair. I don't want to participate in an ex parte communication to you. I'm requesting a deferral because of issues that have arisen from an official Yamhill County document that shows the applicant was given information from the opposition to this project for a comment, and that comment was included into the public record without the solicitation or invitation of the opposition to participate in the communication. This has given risen to the necessity to have an exhaustive and extensive public record search. And this is to prepare competently for the hearing that will, is currently agendized for January.
Excuse me, I believe, if I, am I correct? If this is not appropriate for public comment?
According to your statement on your agenda and according to the path of practice that you've always followed, yes, you're correct.
See, because we're, as we, as we point out, that, that the time is limited to comment on a topic other than quasi judicial land use matters or another topic.
This was dealing with process.
But process of what?
The process of an administrative process that deals with the appeals process.
An application that you made to county?
Correct, but it's the process used by a department within the county that I'm talking about, not the actual information contained therein, just the process.
The other parties that are involved in this have a right to be around when he's doing this, and that's why we have a quasi judicial process and procedures to deal with it. So there will be a time when he will be able to do this, and I don't believe this is the appropriate time.
Well, I assert the fact that I'm not identifying anything to do with the applicant outside of the word applicant. No, no other topic will be discussed because I will not utilize this body for any type of inappropriate type of commentary on a matter that is pending. What I'm talking about is the process itself.
And you will have an opportunity, is there a hearing scheduled on this?
There is currently a hearing that was scheduled.
You will have the opportunity to comment on that at that hearing.
Okay, okay, fine.
And that's the appropriate time.
All right, well, then the issue is this was for a deferral of the time period due to the extensive public record search that will be exhausted due to an ex parte communication.
You should try to work that out with the plan.
Okay, that's fine. Then there were a couple other matters that are not associated with this. One deals with your audit reports and a lack of internal controls from your county administrator. This has to be very seriously looked at with reference to the other impending, pending issues dealing with your nonprofits. Audit should also be included for your nonprofits, just for performance purposes, with reference to the amount of money that you're spending on these people. Two other issues deal with your committees, one on water use. Now, I'm new to this area, and I came up during the summer, and I see these huge water cannons out in the field. Now, I'm very pro agriculture, but I'm very concerned with groundwater depletion. And so I'm not, I don't know if it's been discussed with reference to how much, if it's restricted or unrestricted groundwater pumping, but this is something to be considered. Lastly, your solid waste and recycle programs to the county, in my opinion, are substandard. The county does not recycle styrofoam. One used carryout plastic bags and other materials. They go to your landfill. Restaurants are known for this, and they should have complete compostable type programs. So you have, you go for zero waste to your landfills unless... The reason I mention this is that in San Jose or Santa Clara County, the city of Maltipetus has run out of place to put their garbage. Newby Island is a manmade structure for the city of San Jose. It's a huge thing for garbage and recycling. They're running out of spaces to put their stuff. Now, they have a very good solid waste program, and they're still working on the problems with contamination, the recycle plus program. But I'm very much attuned to what's happening down there, and I don't want to see it happen here. And it's already well underway because of the, for whatever reason, and I'm not being disrespectful or discourteous to the administration, but improvement is mandatory. And I'll leave it at that, and I thank you for the time period. And the documents that I presented to you speak for themselves.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
So, Mr. Wall, how long you been in the area?
Well, I've been in the area over the summer. I came up four separate times from San Jose because I didn't want to pay the vegans to move my nursery pots and use bricks, all right, fine. But I'm permanently up here. Well, it's permanent because we own property up here, and we had a house built. And so I'm a permanent resident here. Of course, if you want to make God laugh, tell him your plans, okay? So I don't know, I mean, I want to be here until I die. And so I plan on making this place a very, very nice place with my experience.
My family also came from Northern California. We've been here about 100 years, and we like to welcome newcomers.
Well, my own.
Welcome to our area.
Thank you very much, sir, but I'm also in favor of building a wall that I'm the last Californian to build out in here.
That's what we normally hear when you guys get up here.
Yeah, well, I told my mayor, and I said, you know, we are going, we have a way.
We are going, yeah, yeah.
That we have a way of dealing with problems.
That's right.
We ship them down to San Jose.
Thank you for coming, and at some point in time, I'd like to maybe respond to any of these. At some point, this is not the right venue, but, so I think there'd be more information that you would be pleased to know about all these different things, but we'll do that another time.
Yes, and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming, taking the time, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'll find a way out, thank you.
All right, thanks, be careful, have a good one. All right. Thank you so much.
Need a renewing program for maintenance.
Yeah, that's for sure. All right, let's move on. First, I want to acknowledge that this will be the last time, most likely, that Lucy will, will be on keyboards for us. We've very much, just, she's been so grateful for her work.
I'd like to make a motion before the board, then, that we reserve the right to pull her in anytime we want.
I think so.
As long as she's in Yamhill County.
Yeah, we're, we're very, very, very sad that she's leaving, but we'll always be just...
Potentially, our electric bill could go down significantly. Other than that, it's not a good thing.
No, it is not a good thing. And also, if, if we don't have another session on the 29th, just to thank Commissioner Springer for his service to this county, and do appreciate that and working with you. But I think we, well, if we're not here on the 29th, we'll...
We'll figure that out.
We'll figure that out, thank you so much.
We'll figure it out.
On our agenda, item B, minutes for consideration for the approval of December 6, 2016, informal session, December 8, formal session. So those are, so then, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Sheriff's taken up a lot more room. Sure, all right. Next, under contracts.
Aren't we going to vote on that?
Oh, go, all right. Motion to approve item B1, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Onto item B2, consideration of approval of a fee for service agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Trillium Family Services, retroactive to July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Like to give you a little bit of information on this. What this is, is Oregon Health Authority gives this, these funds to the CCO. The CCO gives the funds to Health and Human Services. We, and then we administer those. And so basically, what it is, it's fee for service with Trillium, and Trillium Family Services does medically necessary psychiatric residential care. It's the farm home, which would be considered the state hospital for children, is the way to describe that. And the reason we don't have a not to exceed number here is because we manage each case individually. So the cost for one particular client might be $70,000, but we try not to have them stay there long. So it would not be a tool we would use for this as a not to exceed amount. So the, the way this is worded is to approve a fee for service agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Trillium Family Services. And again, this is psychological testing and crisis respite for subacute care.
So help me understand how this isn't a blank check.
It's not a blank check because what we're doing is taking, we manage each patient's care individually. So one year utilization might be high, one year it might be really low. So if each case is managed so that, and this is from Silas's explanation, if each case is managed so that there's a minimal amount of time spent in, in respite care, there, the tool is not really an accurate representation because, as I said, that one year you might have one case, another year you might have others, and you're just basically managing it per necessary patient.
And there is, at the back of the contract, a list of per diem rates that apply. So we do know what the cost for each day or each...
And how often do we monitor this or look at what our expenses are and look to see, are we, is there a better approach?
Well, the only thing is, is that we're not, utilization is, is only what utilization's going to be. I mean, there's not much we can do. We're trying to keep them out of that, that's the last, last resort.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I'm just saying, if this, if we're not really monitoring this, are we certain that this is the best practice as far as providing the service? I don't know.
We are monitoring, we're monitoring each, each one because the need, it's going to be based on what the need is. So it's a may need more, may need less. Am I explaining that?
This is a service that we have been receiving through our, along with Mid Valley VCN, but as the VCN winds, it's now, Silas has brought this forward as a direct contract for us to enter into with Trillium. So it is a service that we've been using. I want to say, you mentioned it could be as high as a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on if you have heightened utilization, that it could be significantly less than that.
And all of this is coming from Oregon Health Services through the CCO?
To HHS. We pay the provider, and one of the, so this is, these are required services for CCO patients. So we have to have them, and we don't really have an option. But everything that you're going to hear, for instance, coming through the next, to be approved, this is all, answers your question as to, are we doing this unnecessarily? Because you'll see some of the other contracts we do to forestall ever sending anybody to you.
And I, and I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that this was unnecessary. I just, where we have money going from here to here, here to here, here to here, it seems to me that we're going to be utilizing a lot of money administratively that could go to direct service. And that's the thing that I always hate, these pass-throughs, because money gets siphoned up that's supposed to actually be used to...
Well, what this is, is we're paying them through a third-party administrator, and that's PH Tech, and they pay the claims for us. Care Oregon does the claims through this third-party administrator. And does that, so it's...
Yeah, I guess, without getting into it and really looking at all the costs involved, I understand, I know Silas does a great job in monitoring the things that are happening in his department, and I'm not questioning that. And I don't have any problem with approving this. I just, I guess in my own mind, was looking for how are we monitoring the amount of money that is being lost in all these transfers?
Well, each, each one of these, there's administrative costs associated with each one of them, like the CCO is getting a percentage for administrative. But that's, again, it originates at the state, and the way this thing is structured is that state to the CCO, which is typically what all of these, a lot of these contracts are, state, CCO, or pass-through, through HHS.
And the CCO, I think, has stepped in and, in certain instances, sort of filled the role that the VCN was in before. But in other situations, they've simply got to be those services down in the county. So I honestly don't know how much of an administrative cut they might be taking for this particular source of funding. What we could do is we could, we could certainly go back and assess a little more detail on the utilization and the number of youth that we've had in the care of this provider and try to get a little better handle on what their numbers might have been for the last couple of years.
And I'm not just to be honest, probably, I just, you know, every time you see money going from here to here, here to here, before it gets to the end user, there's a lot of, you know, and maybe, maybe we could serve a few more people if that money went directly to the service provider, you know, a contract directly with...
But the contract is through Care Oregon, so from the state to Care Oregon, so we don't have a direct contract with the state for any of these...
It becomes an issue of stature, statue, I believe, in the long run.
Yeah, that's absolutely...
Anyway, that's, that's, that's the question I had, and I, I read the...
I would like to live in your world one day, and if at all possible.
You know, I'm... All right, and let's, okay, so can we have a, I'll make a... I'll make a motion to approve the fee for service agreement with Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Trillium Family Services, retroactive July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Next, we have an amendment with the Oregon Family Support Network. And, and what that is, is there are roughly 60 high-needs kids, young people in this program at any time. And what this does is it offers stipends. This includes a market adjustment, 2.6%, and it updates our different compliance. And so it's a, a not to exceed amount of $155,331.92 for fiscal year 2016-17. It was included in the 16-17 HHS adopted budget. The $2,200 stipend funds for the family advocate was not included, but they have sufficient expense authority. So it's basically services for our RAP families, one of the services for families that receive wraparound support through Health and Human Services. So this would be to approve an amendment to the, to HHS for Oregon Family Service Support Network, retroactive July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017.
So, Madam Chair, I'd move the approval of B3.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item B3. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Onto item B4, consideration of approval of amendment number four to the agreement between Yamhill County HHS and George Fox University in the amount of $171,516, retroactive to July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. And as you know, we have a contract with George Fox, and they provide crisis, crisis services to the two local hospitals. And, and so we have an existing agreement. It's 24-hour coverage on the weekends. And this is an automatic renew clause that increases the base monthly payments from $10,353 to $14,293, not to exceed $677,601. That's for the entire contract period. And it's, again, those base monthly payments. It's an entire contract period, which is five years now, and it includes psychological testing services. And one of the things we need to know is that we have removed certain amendments to this, taking out the law enforcement component of this that we now have through another provider, and what we call dialectical behavior therapy services. We have coverage for those in another area, and that's with telephone crisis support, which we'll talk about in another amendment. So what this does is it basically just is an amendment to the contract that we have with George Fox, and they provide the screening at both local hospitals after hours and on the weekends. But not when we have staff available, we're doing that on our own.
So we're reducing the services they provide and increasing the payment to them, if I was to be said?
We have taken out, because it would have been more expensive, we've taken out these two components, which was with law enforcement and with the, the DBT, with dialectical behavior therapy, which is basically talk therapy. So this is a new component of what we're doing. We've removed those. That's happening through another contract with lifelines. And we're just, this is extending this agreement because it needs to be renewed. So we're increasing their base monthly payments for this, for these services, not including those other two. Okay? So I would move approval of this, approving the amendment number four to our agreement with HHS and George Fox for $171,516, retroactive to July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Next, onto item B5, which is consideration of approval of amendment number five to the agreement between Yamhill County HHS and G42 Systems Consulting for an additional amount of $35,496, effective through December 31, 2017. We have electronic medical records provider for that. They have been, this systems consultant has been recommended by Rain Tree, which is who provides our electronic medical records. They are exempt from any kind of competitive bidding.
We get a sole source standard into this contract with them.
Right, so they're going to do consulting, they're going to do, basically just do the managing of our electronic medical records, and that is because Rain Tree recommends that we do that.
Yeah, and my understanding is that there's still some ongoing software updating and work that's being done to bring our Rain Tree system up to updated levels. I don't know exactly what the contract has been working on, but we've had an agreement with this individual for several years. My understanding is it's an ongoing effort to keep Rain Tree current and also provide some upgrades to the system.
So that would be the software development and also six hours a week in consultation to two hours.
Yeah, there's some customization and some additional work he's doing as they try to create a complete electronic medical record system.
Okay, so I would move approval of item B5, consideration of approval of number five, to our agreement with G42 Systems Consulting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto item B6, consideration of approval of amendment number two to the agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Lutheran Community Services Northwest for prevention services in the amount of $135,313, effective January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017. And this is for a family place. I know your commissioners are familiar with a family place and the services to at-risk kids and for their families and to keep kids out of foster care. And what this is, is a, a market adjustment, which is 2.6%. And it updates our compliance, and it is included in HHS. It targets kids that are at risk. And it originates, again, with the CCO, and the goal is to produce better long-term health outcomes with kids with high risk, multiple risk factors. So this is one of those things we're talking about, keeping people out of, kids out of state, the farm home. This is one of those things.
So it's a renewal with a 2.6 increase and...
And it includes updates.
They've been doing a great job. Lutheran Community Services has done a phenomenal job for us.
Yep, especially this program. All right, well, then I would move approval of item B6. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Onto item B7, consideration of approval of an agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Lines for Life, effective January 1, 2017. This is, we got competitive quotes from a number of different companies prior to this, and Lines for Life has shown a really high level of expertise in these types of crisis line services. And they, a review team has recommended them for our county. They will provide, provide 24/7 crisis hotline services, that dialectical behavioral therapy, that DBT coaching, they'll do that. That's what we removed from that, speaking here. That's going to go in with their contract. So that talk therapy is going to be phone coaching for adults, crisis calls, coverage for youth and adolescents during nighttime and weekend hours. And the family and youth programs with HHS will do the rest of the, do this a lot of the time. So...
Do you have a dollar, could you?
We do. They are basically going to be charging us, it's going to be about $58,000, approximately $58,000 annually, based on this rate of projected usage, which would be, for instance, if we have 200 calls, it's going to be $17.48 per call. Then it goes up, like, in other words, 201 calls to 250. Basically, the monthly fee would fluctuate in that, but the additional fee for this talk therapy is going to be that $17. So we have, again, an approximation of what it's going to be annually for Lines for Life.
And that's just under $60,000, is it?
Right. This is based on the projected usage, and they do have that expense authority. It is in their adopted budget. So, so I'll move approval of item B6, which is the agreement between, I'm sorry, B7, consideration of approval with, for an agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Lines for Life. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Onto item, onto item B8, consideration of approval of an agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Project Able, and that is in the amount of $363,360, retroactive to September 15, 2016 through June 30, 2017. And... I don't see Project Able in here.
Oh, that's probably because I had it up on my desk.
Okay.
And we printed, we must not have printed out the revised one that I sent out earlier. I don't know if I copy, people see, that's my fault.
Okay.
No, I, I got it.
Let me make sure I, this is Lutheran, this is...
Let me go.
Here, hold on, maybe it's somewhere.
Turn it up again.
Um, let me see, I might actually have my copy of... No, I don't have it.
You sent an updated version. I thought I did.
Yeah.
So yeah, we have to go ahead and do that.
While we're waiting, what I want to know is why she... All we're waiting, what I wanna know is why she, her liaison's responsibilities get all the money? Is what I wanna understand, do you? Can you straighten me out on that? Every line, please.
Talk to Silas about that.
I got the sheriff over here, he's just waiting at the table for some scraps.
Sorry, I'm just going in order, I know.
No scraps, nothing, no.
Kaylee, could you maybe see if you could help Lucy copy that and then, Sheriff, if you wanted to use...
Want me to move on? Okay, all right, so we'll move on to...
Make sure Lucy can come back.
You can, yeah, we can, we'll just move on. Okay, so let's move on to item B nine. And that is consideration of approval of an agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Catholic Community Services in the amount of three hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars retroactive to October first, twenty sixteen through September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. And this has to do with the Rainbow Lodge, which is respite care. And that increases the funding to accommodate a higher average daily population. So you've got more utilization there. Thank you very much. And they're doing training, peer-delivered services. And it's through Catholic Community Services, which has typically managed this... So what this does is decreases the time that kids are waiting for psychiatric beds in local emergency rooms.
This one, I think it's actually an amendment to an existing agreement, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, so this is the first amendment. Agenda says it's an agreement, but it's actually an amendment to our existing agreement, extending it for another year, whereas Mary said adding some additional services.
Okay, so anyway, it is an amendment to the agreement to provide respite care with youth who are having serious emotional behavioral challenges. And they have the sufficient expense authority. And the kids are often able to attend school while they're waiting for beds, or residential beds. And they're often able to return to their home environment. And it also is used for foster parents who are having kids with behaviors to move to Rainbow Lodge. So the approval of amendment number one to the agreement between Yamhill County Health and Youth Services and Catholic Community Services for three hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars. That is a contract not to exceed the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. Any, so I'll move approval of that. Any former, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. On to item B ten, consideration of approval of a limited duration agreement between Yamhill County and Correct Care Solutions LLC for jail medical services effective January fifteenth, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents for the first six months, renewable for additional one-month extensions in the amount of one hundred and five thousand seventy-three dollars and eight cents per month. Maximum duration twelve months, subject to the final review and approval by county council's office. Sheriff?
Thank you, Sheriff. As you know, we brought this to the local contract review board for the opportunity to enter into an emergency type contract. We've had some issues with fulfilling our medical requirement within the facility, having a hard time finding qualified RNs that are willing to come in and work in an enclosed environment. So we have made contact with other counties who have contracted their services for medical to other entities. And as we started down this road, Correct Care Solutions was the one company that reached out to us and said that they would be willing to come into our facility of our size and provide this type of coverage. What this six-month limited duration contract allows is for us to have something in place while we work with county council and develop a formal RFP, to go out to get a formal contract signed from a particular vendor. With the contract, what this will allow is it gives us actually twenty-four-hour coverage in the jail. It provides an RN seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. It provides for a supervisory nurse Monday through Friday, eight to five. Also provides onsite doctor coverage, four hours a week, along with a few other extras that we tend to have to go outside of the facility to, to help facilitate. They also take into account in this contract what our off-site medical costs are on average for the last five years and what our pharmaceutical cost is. That's part of the total bill. We get a rebate back on the off-site care, so if we don't spend that money, then they don't charge us that amount and we get a rebate at the end of the contract. So as we move into the next contract, then you can reduce your overall cost by that percent. What this will allow for us to do is to start effective January fifteenth with twenty-four-hour coverage. We'll go through a full RFP and hopefully the same company will continue and will be, you know, willing to put in a bid. But this gives us an opportunity to get a kind of a six-month trial and to see if this will work.
Sheriff, I have a question on article one, it talks about health assessment. Health assessment of a covered person shall be performed as soon as possible, but no later than fourteen calendar days after the inmate arrives at jail. So that seems like a long time. Do we, what is our, like, what is our initial immediate assessment of an inmate?
So our initial assessment would be at the booking process from the booking deputies. That fourteen-day window is what's required by statute that we currently do as well with our existing medical staff. And that's a complete physical. It's checking their blood pressure, making sure they're not sick, making sure that they're not injured. I mean, it's a, it's a complete makeover or workover of the individual. But an immediate assessment happens once they're brought into booking. And with this type of coverage, we'll have that RN on hand to be able to come in during the day, Monday through Friday, while even on the weekends right now, between basically eight and six, we have an RN that can do that. But what happens is if someone comes in at ten o'clock at night on a weekend that looks like they may have something going on, but we're not quite sure, we never had the opportunity to have someone come in, at least give a quick look over of the individual to determine whether or not they need to be placed in our medical facility or not. So the contract basically is what the state law says, is the full medical screening of basically a physical of each inmate. But we will be part of their processes that they are on site immediately to be able to look at and intimate that has an obvious issue going on. They'll be able to do the assessment right then and there.
So Madam Chair, you see under section one point one point one, there is an initial receiving screening, which is meant to be performed within not more than twenty-four hours after they arrive at the jail. So that I think is the initial screening that the sheriff is referring to. And then obviously the more full assessment within fourteen days.
Okay. And the physician, is it access to a physician? So in other words, you're on call, your nurse will make a call, has access to call a physician should she?
Yeah, in addition to that, there is in some of the sample scheduling options that they gave us shows that the doctor would actually be on site for, you know, roughly four hours a week. But in addition to that, they have that entire company that they can contact. They can consult with the physician or recommend us sending them out to off-site care.
And they're gonna pick up the cost for transport?
Everything up to the contract at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. What we'll do is we'll continue to work with the charge nurse and the company to make sure that they're not just randomly sending people out on a routine basis just because, because we have to monitor that. The same thing with the pharmaceutical piece. We have to monitor how, where that money's at, because that's what we currently spend. The way the contract would read is if we exceed that level, then it's out of pocket in addition to the contracted rate, which is in essence what we do right now. But we've looked at our five-year average. And they base the contract off of what we've spent over the last five years on average. So we shouldn't exceed those. But again, it's all dependent on how much they can do in-house and how much they can do off-site. In theory, if you have an RN and a doctor on site on a regular basis and two, the ability to have two RNs, we should be able to manage a majority of the issues in-house without having to send to an ER. What happens right now is if it's after hours and there's a question and we can't have an RN come in because they're not available, their recommendation is take them to the hospital. So then we call an ambulance, they come pick them up and transport them to the hospital. So we have an ER visit and an ambulance visit for something that could be as simple as the flu.
So fingers crossed that in the legislature this session, that they'll be able to address the fact that Medicaid patients are losing their coverage once they enter our jail.
Yeah, if we can get the federal government to approve the eleven fifteen waiver through the state or through the federal government that allows for that thirty-day window. With that Medicare/Medicaid application to the federal government, the states ask for pre-trial inmates who are in custody thirty days or less to be still eligible for OHP. And if that happens, then this company would, has already the process in place to be able to bill for those services. And then that would reduce our one hundred and twenty-five thousand out of off-site cap.
And you're gonna have an RN on-site twenty-four-seven with this contract, is that correct?
Yeah, to provide services in both the juvenile detention center and the jail.
Which really, you know, addresses our liability issues. Madam Chair, I would suggest approval of, or a move for approval of B ten, please.
We have a motion to approve item B ten, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Do we have, yes.
We got, you got some...
I got some from that one.
Yes, yeah.
You stay at the, you stay at the table long enough, there's a scrap or two.
Silas left you.
We were gonna say Silas left me a quarter.
Silas left you a few of them.
Stay at the table long enough, Laura's gonna come to throw you out.
Does Laura knock your stuff off?
No, but usually I don't stop you, so thank you.
Oh, well, you know.
Wait, wait until ten.
I know, I tried.
You won't get any neck time, I'll tell you that.
Sheriff, can I scoot you over here? I'm having a...
Sure, you can. I'll be more than happy to.
Thank you.
Well, ask your instant replay from Dave, see exactly why.
I forgot. Thanks a lot.
Slow, slow mo.
You caught all of that, didn't you?
Thanks, Sheriff.
All right, thanks, we'll see you.
All right. Next, we have, under committees, a consideration of the following reappointments to the Special Transportation Fund Advisory Committee, STFAC. Reappointment of Nancy Kine to a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty. B, reappoint Christine Holmgren to a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And C, reappoint Mark Schiffmacher to a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
And Madam Chair, yes, all three of these people have indicated their desire to continue to serve on this committee and they are doing a good job. And it's a very important committee and I recommend approval of these three appointments.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item B eleven, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. On to C, old business.
Going to go back to...
You have to finish that.
To the A, the D.
Okay.
The A or the D?
Yes, numeral eight.
All right, on to, back to item B eight. And that is consideration of approval of an agreement between HHS and Project Able in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And that is retroactive to...
Three hundred and sixty-three, correct?
Three hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty retroactive.
I just said two hundred and sixty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, three hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty retroactive to September fifteenth, twenty sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
No.
Here we have it, I have it right here. Kind of fell. Here is the, the agreement. Sorry, guys, I kinda got myself all...
Discombobulated.
Discombobulated here.
I've got a copy of Silas's memoir right here. Do you want me to give overview on that or?
Yes, as Project Able is, is one of our community partners and this is peer support, so go ahead.
And it's to provide technical assistance and training services in Yamhill, Marion, Polk County. In addition, Project Able manages downstream contractor payments and work with identified community partners, including Champion Team, Provoking Hope, Polk County Changeers Bridgeway Recovery. This is actually a grant, agreement that HHS applied for back in September. They've been awarded the grant and Project Able would be, we'd be passing the funds through to Project Able to then perform the services called for under the, under the terms of the agreement. I would ask that, like we just did on the sheriff's contract, if you could make your approval of this agreement, also subject to the final overview and approval of county council's office. We're still working on a couple of cleanup items with the contractor. Don't expect any material alterations from the document that's in front of you, but it hasn't yet been finalized, so.
Okay, so then we will make that consideration of approval of an agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Project Able, subject to county council's further review.
If you got to a point where you thought there was something that was materially different, you would then bring it back, correct?
Yeah. Which is the same thing with the, you have medical services.
Okay, so I would move approval of item B eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
B eight passes. On to, we're on to old business, which is item C one, which is consideration of adoption of the final written decision, findings, and conditions of the planning docket C dash one, three dash one six, which is the approval of a conditional use for home occupation and the applicant is Carrie Loughlin. Counselor?
Yes, Madam Chair, commissioners, I circulated the draft of that yesterday. And since then, we fixed some typos and added a finding on visibility that I already discussed with you. So I would just recommend the adoption of, you heard this on December first and voted three to nothing to uphold the planning commission's decision. So all there is is to adopt these findings.
Madam Chair, I would move for approval of C one.
All right, we have a motion to approve item C one, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. On to item D one, which is add-ons and non-consent. Consideration of approval of amendment number two to the agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Champion Team for peer-led and outreach services, a total amount of one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents. And that's effective January first, twenty seventeen through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. Sorry, twenty sixteen, yeah, twenty seventeen through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. Champion Team is another one of our community partners that accesses peer lived experience, peer mentors and services. These are people who've had trauma, substance abuse, mental illness, and suicidality. And this offers a number of different training services, free of charge to the client, and things like meditation and exercise and nutrition and working with a mentor. So again, these are just another one of those wraparound services that we can keep our clients who are having mental health or dual diagnosis out of any kind of institutionalization or hospitalization. So I would move approval of item D one, which is consider, consideration of approval of an amendment number two to the agreement between Yamhill County HHS and Champion Team for peer-led and outreach services. And the total amount is one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents.
And Madam Chair, is that part of that grant that the commissioner was talking about that we talked about in...
No.
Eight?
No, that... No, that's through, that's the Light, Light, Lifelines and Project Able.
Project Able, I think, is doing similar peer-based services, research and coordination. And I'm speaking beyond my level of detailed knowledge about, about that contract. I have to go back and look. What my understanding about what Project Able is doing is they're going to be working with a number of other contractors to help develop trainings and techniques for the delivery of peer-based services. This is actually a provider who is providing at the moment, has been, and this is a renewal for another calendar year, some form of peer-based services already.
They're already doing the counseling and providing the environment and the exercise and all of those types of classes.
These folks will have direct client contact. Project Able, my understanding is, won't have any direct client contact. They'll be working with a number of other contractors to help develop techniques for the delivery of these services.
So, I would move approval of item D one. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Public hearings, we have none. Announcements, do we have any announcements?
Well, I want to make one announcement. I think the next time Silas has won five items on the agenda, he wants to be here.
Well, we actually talked about it and he did, he did offer to be here by phone, but he was concerned about setting a precedent. Normally, he would be able to, to be here and would consider being here, but this is just to make it so that we wouldn't necessarily have to have another session.
And there are a number of these that need to be replaced before the end of the calendar year.
January.
So, it's going to be Tuesday, January one, so.
We do have, let's see, I think that's it. I think that's it. Can we do commissioner updates, speed round? Commissioner? Commissioner?
My office is being painted.
As we speak.
As we speak, that's right. Got lots of exciting things going on, but we'll hold that off. We've got people coming in on the thirtieth of this month. Talk about a couple of special projects out in the west end of the valley, dealing with affordable housing. Then on the ninth of January, a couple of people coming in from Boeing who are going to be showing how we are ready in Yamhill County to do a number of really significant projects and hopefully we can build some relationships there. I'll have the head of all their project development and their main training person. So it's going to be a very interesting day, so hopefully we can make them aware of just how great Yamhill County is and get some of those dollars flowing this way because Boeing's spending a lot of money in the state of Oregon. And I would like to see a lot of that man right here.
All right, sounds exciting. Went to a meeting of the McMinnville Wayfinder, Wayfinding Committee and they're working on a very ambitious project to do signage using sea reach, kind of like what we do with our blue signs. And one of the things that would be really exciting is if we could get something over here which shows what county buildings are what, so that people will know where to go. So that was something to look forward to. Also, the distracted driving task force, we pretty much wrapped up and proposing legislation which would basically, which would take some of the requirements that, for instance, with driving under the influence, we've reduced those deaths by twenty-eight percent. But the number of people dying from distracted driving has gone up by just about that much. So we're trying to change the law so that it's basically just a little bit more clear on what electronic devices can and cannot be used while driving. Also, have put Mitchell G. in touch with, at the state, with a local, some folks who are trying to put together a distillery on property which is, has the Ewing Young tree and Ewing Young buried there. And as you know, Ewing Young was a pioneer who pioneered distilling. And so that would be great, so that, we're working on that. Homeward Bound Pets, Toward Pet Stop Inn today with Captain Battle and Ray. And we're trying to work on streamlining the whole dog control issue and as you know, we're real short-staffed and it's been, it's been kind of difficult. But we're continuing to work on that, so all good stuff.
And just a, just a side note for those that aren't privy to our emails back and forth. The road department, once again, Public Works did a tremendous job through this storm. We, my wife and I drove practically the length of the county both directions, going into Portland on Friday and coming back on Saturday. And I know those guys have been out there like twenty-four, seven, fair days. Really trying to, you know, keep, you know, this storm under wraps and did a, once again, tremendous and admirable job, so we don't want to forget about that.
And also got an email from a woman who lives out in my area, whose, whose area straddles Washington County and Clackamas and Yamhill County, and she says by far, the road department here had taken much better care of the roads compared to Washington County. And that's another example of our Public Works Department. And pass that along to John and crew, they were out twenty-four, seven, working in some pretty horrific conditions, so.
They looked pretty rough by Friday.
When everybody was enjoying their Thanksgiving dinner, remember we had that tremendous rainstorm and our crews were out there working around the clock. They weren't home with their families enjoying.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's, we do, we have people who are so committed to seeing to it that their job is done and done well that really are concerned about what Yamhill County looks like and the citizens of Yamhill County, so.
Well, and I love, you know, the model that Director Phelan provides for his workers, he's out there with them all through the night. When, when the director doesn't have to be there, he's out there with them and fighting battles, so.
Yes, he is.
Kudos to those guys.
At any department, we get more emails from people who say how much they appreciate Public Works.
Than all the rest combined.
Than all the rest combined.
It's a fact.
It is a fact. So, okay, well, then, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn.
Well, there is one other, you know, Sunday is Christmas, for all those who are wondering when that falls, so.
Thank you.
I think, I think we were.
And a merry Christmas to all and to all.
To all. Thank you. Good night. All right, well then we adjourned our formal informal session. It is three o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Lucy. Standing ovation.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Commissioner Sperry.
Well, so right now, we're doing the intersection there at Tenth and Ninety-Nine W. That had to be done separately from.